Just a note on public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings. Anyone has such input? Now is the time. Seeing none, we'll move on. Administrative reviews, there are none. New public hearings, there are none. And continued public hearings. Our first is 150-152 Dalton Road. And for clarity, one of our members is under the weather and will be listening from the phone and watching on TV. So she may have questions over her phone. 150-152 Dalton Road, Luke Fugier, DBA Fugier Landscaping Incorporated, and 150-152 Dalton Road LLC. The applicant requests an amendment to the 1955 variance, or in the alternative, a special permit to modify an existing nonconforming use for continuation of the current mixed use as a residential dwelling and a landscape company. The property consists of approximately 1.66 acres located in the residential B district. I think, Mr. Haverty, should I allow Pam to speak into? We're looking at some alternatives.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would probably be best if I could just sort of summarize my letter that I submitted to the board today.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Paul Haverty, Town Council. When I was originally requested to look at this issue by the building commissioner, I provided a determination that the use could not move forward unless the use variance that was granted in 1955 was modified. That determination was based upon incomplete information. I wasn't aware that there were really two issues on the property, one of which was the retail use that was authorized by the variance in 1955, but there was also a pre-existing use on that site which was allowed as of right at the time it was commenced, and that was for the greenhouse/nursery use. That use has since become a nonconforming use. The zoning bylaws have changed. They do not allow greenhouse or nursery uses within this particular zoning district. So sometime between 1955 and 1977 became a pre-existing nonconforming use. The character of that pre-existing nonconforming use has changed over the years, and that's something that the board is going to have to address. However, the use variance really is a dead issue. There is no retail use currently being utilized on the site, and therefore, it's my opinion that that use variance has lapsed. It's no longer viable and is not something that the board needs to take any action on. With regards to the use that is currently being made on the property, there is a provision of the Chelmsford zoning bylaws, Chapter 195, Section 8.1, that says the board may award a special permit to change a nonconforming use in accordance with this section only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. This provision goes on to note that the board may consider either, one, a change or substantial extension of the use, or, two, a change from one nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use. I laid forth, and we've gone over these provisions previously, the powers test for making a determination as to whether a pre-existing nonconforming use has been changed or substantially extended. So the first prong of that test is whether the present use reflects the nature and use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect. The second prong is whether there is a difference in the quality or character, as well as the degree of the present use. And, three, whether the current use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood. If any of these three prongs are triggered by the particular use, then you then need to go to the next step, which is to apply the provisions of the bylaw that look at whether or not there has been a change or extension, and the board can allow that presuming it makes the determination through a special permit finding that those changes or extensions are not significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood than the nonconforming use as originally commenced. So that's really the process which the board should be looking at this particular application. It should be looking at whether or not it chooses, first of all, whether or not it determines there is a change or extension of the original pre-existing nonconforming use, and presuming that there is, whether or not it would determine whether or not to issue a special permit finding that that change or extension is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So to clarify, if we don't issue the special permit, would it just continue on as it is?
No.
No. We would need to do that to allow business to continue.
Well, let's... The first determination you need to make is whether or not there has been a change or extension of the original nonconforming use. So if you make a determination that there has been no change or extension, then yes, it continues on without any further relief. You would just issue a decision that contains that determination. If you make a determination that there has been a change or a substantial extension, then you have to go to the special permit finding of whether or not such change or extension is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I see. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the letter that you'd, or the email that you had sent out, "The board may award a special permit to change a nonconforming use in accordance with this section only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming..." What is the existing? What it is today?
So I would say that the nonconforming use here is the greenhouse/nursery use. And you're going to take a look at whether or not, I mean, and that has morphed into what's essentially going on today, a use that has apparently been in place since the mid-1980s. I think that your review should be looking at whether or not that use is a change or extension of the original pre-existing nonconforming use, because that's the use that was lawful when commenced and then became nonconforming when the zoning bylaws changed sometime between 1955 and 1977.
Is that time period what we're using as the existing?
That is what I would say you need to look at as what the existing use is. You can certainly factor in that there has been a use ongoing since the mid-1980s that has not caused an outcry in the neighborhood, but I think that in terms of determining whether or not there has been a change or extension, you need to look at the landscape, I'm sorry, the greenhouse/nursery use that was originally commenced.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, Paul, at this time? Seeing none. Ms. Brown, would you like to recap? You sent a pretty lengthy letter.
And I really appreciate Mr. Haverty's review, because he was quite concise, and with all the facts in this case, I think that's somewhat difficult to do. I've provided you a lot of information in the last week. Much of it is sort of repackaging some that you've seen before, as well as providing additional detail that we didn't have previously on some of the prior uses. So we had made some statements previously. We've now been able to get written statements from some of the prior users of the property, owners of the property, to help supplement the discussion, if you will, in looking at answering these questions that Mr. Haverty has raised. I do agree with his synopsis on where we are, and I'm glad he covered the variance, because I didn't want to dwell on that one. I think when I first put my letter together several months ago, I was struggling with the variance, because knowing that the greenhouses had been there. But we really hadn't been able to yet do the research on the zoning to figure out at what point in time the greenhouses were established and/or became nonconforming. So we know that they were there long prior to 1955. We know that they were permitted by right, by the zoning bylaw, in 1956, and we know that they were no longer permitted, and this is greenhouse and nursery, in 1977. So it's somewhere in that period. I'm not sure it really matters exactly when, because the use was continuous throughout. So I guess to jump in without, I don't want to go reading my information. I'd like to just try to capture some of these items, which I've already started here. I guess, jumping to 1983-84 era is when we knew that the greenhouse landscape, or greenhouse/nursery business, and we know these are commercial greenhouses, they're over 8,000 square feet. There's documentation that plants, flowers, et cetera, were being grown, and they were being delivered regularly off-site. I'm not sure it's reliable, but I actually found some information on Bennett owning a funeral home, and possibly some of it was going there. It's a little bit difficult to rebuild history from the '50s, but we know that this was by no means, you know, someone's backyard greenhouse. It was clearly commercial. And even the building inspector in 1984, who said, "You need a permit for this," documented that being a nonconforming use. So all of the building inspectors, three or four of them, that have commented on this property, so this isn't one that slipped under the radar. It's been in the files, it's been in the department files, it's been with Mr. Negron, as well as several other building inspectors have looked at the property, and in each case have indicated it's a prior nonconforming use. What we do with it has been another question. Admittedly, in 1984, the building inspector has no authority to deny a use. This is common practice where to get to the next step in making a permit application in many communities, you actually need a denial letter before you can make the application. So that, in fact, wasn't a denial, and if you read that statement, it says, "Denied", Section 2420, I believe it is, in the 1984-1983 zoning, that is, in fact, the expansion of a special permit for an expansion of a nonconforming use. So I think there's no question that what Mr. Haverty indicated and what I've been indicating is in terms of the prior use, at least the greenhouse use being prior nonconforming. There appears to be no record that a special permit was obtained for environmental gardens who did occupy and use the greenhouses, as well as expanding, and I think the word morph or transition is accurate, in that times change, methods change, sometimes it's, you know, you don't grow anymore because you can import. The other thing is, in the '50s and '60s, we were doing our own home maintenance. We weren't doing lots of hardscapes. So the whole industry of nursery and landscaping has modified over the decades to include not only professionals coming to homes to do landscape design and plantings, but those include now the hardscapes, which is the stone patios and walkways and retaining walls with planting beds and all of those things, poolside kind of amenities, grills, all of the things that many homeowners are looking for these days. So, you know, it's my position that we have kind of morphed from the prior uses on. At the same time, is it different? I guess that's your call. You know, can we morph to this extent so that we now have a business that still plants trees, and it still holds these things on-site, and it still goes and, you know, constructs them somewhere else? It's for you to determine whether that's enough of a change that triggers a special permit. If it is, then we get into, as Paul indicated, the powers test. I disagree a little bit if we have to start there, but it's okay, because it's out there. The powers test is based on a case that was an interpretation of the statute under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, that talks about grandfathering and changes to grandfathering. And the powers test came into being to how do we evaluate that? Paul nicely outlined the three prongs of that test. Because it is sort of a protection to the property owner of what is, we used to call it grandfathering, now we call it vested rights, but that nonconform, the ability to maintain or continue or modify the nonconforming use, cities and towns can make their bylaws more flexible, and Chelmsford has, and that's the second part of what was read here. So your bylaw essentially trumps the statute, because the supremacy clause is there to protect the person who or the party that has the nonconforming use. So you can offer greater protections, and you can allow what you do in your bylaw today, which are the two different, similar but different pieces about either expanding an existing nonconforming use or changing to another nonconforming use that is somewhat different in nature. Both of them do require you to evaluate whether the use is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, as most of your special permits do. Here, I think the importance of having these interim uses since 1984 is that, you know, we don't always have the ability to do it first and then ask the question. Usually, you have something come before you, and somebody says, "I'd like to do this with the property. This is what's happening now, this is what I want to do," and you're all stuck with trying to determine whether that might be okay, and whether it could be more or less detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use. Here, it's been ongoing since 1984, close to 40 years. We've heard that there have been a couple calls for one thing or another, but really no zoning enforcement until this latest letter, which is why we're here, and no complaints from, generally from the abutters, that there's, you know, excessive activity, excessive noise, or anything else coming from this site. So I think that does need to come into play in whether we're determining whether the current use compared to any time between 1938, 1955, 1977, 1983, whatever it is, whatever that date is, as these uses evolved over time. I have, as I mentioned, we've submitted a number of support letters. Rather than just saying, "I support Fugier Landscaping," most of these, while they do that, are indicating how long individuals have lived in their homes that are abutting the property, what their experience is with the activities that have been ongoing on the property over the years. Some of them do go back 30, 40, 50 years. And then the most recent submission, where I will walk through the test, actually includes either letters or affidavits from some of the prior owner/operators that help us with the question of the level of activity, the vehicles they had, and equipment they had on the site, and kind of a number of employees in some cases, and things that will help us evaluate whether what Fugier Landscaping has been doing and propose to continue to do compared to the past number of decades. Any questions before I go on? Okay. So quickly outlining the powers test, the first two prongs are so closely intermingled that they're really hard to discuss separately, so I do discuss them together. But as Mr. Haverty said, the first question is, does the proposed use reflect the nature and purpose of the nonconforming use prevailing when the zoning took effect? Now, this is where Chelmsford is a little bit different, but for all purposes for this evening, we'll use 1970, I'm sorry, yeah, what's the date I came up with? 56, 1977, sorry, is the zoning bylaw that we knew, greenhouses and nurseries are no longer allowed in the residential zone. Again, what was going on during that period between 1955 and 1977 didn't change, so it doesn't really matter if the date was 1966 or 1977. Secondly, is there a difference in the quality or character or degree of the proposed use when compared to the protected nonconforming use? So looking at these, some of the case law looks at things like the transition of a local mom-and-pop sit-down restaurant to now a Burger King with counter service, more fast food, potentially a drive-thru, and things like that. Again, I say these two tests get intermingled, because part of it, we're talking about what's the impact, what's the potential impact of the new use compared to the old use. The other is, is it closely related enough to the original use in terms of what it is? You know, restaurant, restaurant, nursery, landscaping yard, those kind of distinctions. But walking through that test, and as submitted by our materials, we have looked back through. It's much easier for us to get back to 1984, because a little bit less is known about the greenhouse. But we were able to locate the Articles of Organization for Bennett Greenhouses and Garden Shop, Inc. They did file a corporation back in the '70s specifically. I'm not sure it matters, but 1976, thank you. And their purpose section was very detailed. Sometimes we just say garden center, or we say greenhouses. But here, "To engage in the business of propagating, growing, harvesting, buying, selling, and dealing in at wholesale or retail flowers, ferns, palms, shrubs, plants, and vegetables, of all kinds, entering contracts and so forth. To build, maintain, and operate greenhouses, hotbeds, cold frames, cellars, storage plants, equipment for transporting its products and supplies, stores, stands, and other places for marketing of its goods, wares, and products. To engage in the business of retail and wholesale sales of any and all items of personal property, and to engage in the business of owning, maintaining, selling, and leasing for hire motor vehicles and other equipment and machinery." So that's what we've been able to find about Bennett. We really haven't found a lot more. But moving on from there, I think I've mentioned a number of times previously that the greenhouse, the greenhouse is on-site behind the existing house, which has been sort of reconstructed. The barn on the right side of the house is original, but the house itself has been reconstructed since way back. I should say that the address listed in the Articles of Organization for Bennett Greenhouses, Inc., is in fact 152 Dalton Road. But we've given you an illustration of the greenhouses that are illustrated on a 1977 plan that was recorded in the registry of deeds, and those scale to over 8,000 square feet of greenhouse space. The documentation regarding, again, these are all opinion letters you've seen previously, but I just wanted to recap here. The building inspector's written opinions from 1984, 1994, and 2018 all indicate that the previous use in each case were nonconforming. And so it's my feeling that should the board's review of the first two prongs of the powers test result in a finding that the landscape contractor's use of the property was or is different in nature, quality, character, and degree than the commercial greenhouse operation, this is when, as Paul said, we jump into the Chelmsford bylaw. So under the Chelmsford zoning, Section 195.8B, there are two parts, 1 and 2, the board of appeals has the authority to consider changes in the use beyond what the general laws provide. And specifically, those include a change or substantial extension of the use. So if you deem that the transition over time from the greenhouse operation, greenhouse/nursery really operation, to the current use, or the use in 1984, which has really been maintained, I think consistently for the last 38 years, that change or substantial extension of the use, and then the second piece is a change from one nonconforming use to another less detrimental nonconforming use. My feeling is that this is something that times have changed, so it may be different. You may reach the conclusion that the present uses are somewhat different than the greenhouses and the operation then, but they would be under your first category, one, which is a change or substantial extension of the use, as opposed to the second. I think either could apply, maybe that's something the board discusses in your deliberations. But just to reiterate, the Chelmsford zoning bylaw actually dispenses with the requirement for the nonconforming use to be similar in kind to the original, provided, again, the test, that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The change in use is transitioned over time to include, and then I think this is important, less wholesale and retail of the product and delivery from the property, and likely more onsite storage of hardscape materials and potentially vehicles. I'm not sure how many vehicles there were back in the nursery/greenhouse years, but they were doing a lot of delivery. So they were producing by growing, cutting, whatever, their plants, and then coming in and out of the site with deliveries. The third part, in most cases, is probably the easiest part of the test, which is, would the proposed use be different in kind and its effect upon the neighborhood than the protected nonconforming use? Again, we're talking about the greenhouses that occupied a huge area of the back of the property, what's remaining, are still actually some of the foundations from the greenhouses, as well as a number of the outbuildings. So there are, I think, three sheds and a repair shop that are still on the property, much smaller, obviously, in scale, but the 8,000 square feet occupied a large percentage of the rear yard. In fact, might be more than what would be allowed today under your provisions about how much building area you could get. This test is really quite similar to the test of being not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood requirement. You're really looking at kind of the same things. That requirement was in the 1983 bylaw, which also would have allowed, had the application been made, would have allowed that transition back in 1984. We had previously provided some information and photos associated with environmental gardens that was there from '84 to '94, and for Anthony's Gardens, it was there from '94 until 2018, and then Fugier came in in 2018. We've included in the package, and I might save the details of this for questions, but the affidavits and letters included in Exhibit C is an affidavit from Joe Liva, who was the operator for environmental gardens. His affidavit is significant in that, if I can move to it. He outlines, really, I think, a pretty intense prior use of the property, as well as indicating number of employees and the equipment he had. We had actually talked to him a couple of months ago, so had some of this information that we'd presented in prior materials, but we didn't have it in writing from the owner of the company. But he, as with Luke and his family, lived on-site and operated his business out of the rear of the site. He actually leased the property from the owner, who was Dominic Leone. He, like the prior owner, had filed Articles of Organization for their company, registered with the town, with this business address and so forth. But I guess of most significance, he was in the landscaping business, including design and construction of big hardscape projects, such as driveways, patios, walkways, stairs, and walls, as well as planting of trees, shrubs, and other landscape material. That is essentially the use that has probably came in in 1984 and has been ongoing ever since, without much change. Fugier Landscaping performs most of the functions of both environmental gardens and Anthony's gardens, but actually doesn't do some of the ones that had been ongoing previously. But back to environmental gardens, they had eight to 12 employees that came to the property to load materials and equipment for jobs, again, weekdays, although they actually worked Saturday, Sunday, and seasonally holidays for retail. They were retailing from the site, I believe they were selling mulch and soil and things like that, too, that are not proposed in the current proposal. And again, in terms of trucks and equipment stored, skids, gears, mini excavators, flatbed trucks, dump trucks, a number of pickups, and then all of the landscape companies, as you know, have trailers. They also, so their retail sale actually involved plants, fill, topsoil, and mulch. So in addition to just having employees coming in and out of the site just to load and go off to do, you know, sites of landscaping sites, coming in in the morning and going out, sorry, coming in and leaving in the morning and coming back and leaving in the afternoon, environmental gardens was doing deliveries of mulch. So they were having mulch and soil and so forth, coming into the site, stockpiled, and then going out of the site for retail, with 52-foot-long trucks, especially during the spring. I've included some photos of, I probably, I did this just for the record, but the photos for environmental gardens just illustrate the types of work they were doing, similar to the types of work Anthony's Garden was doing, and some of the work that Fugier was I guess while I'm on these, I will jump to, the next is, came in the form of a letter from Leah McMillan, who was Anthony's from Leah McMillan, who was Anthony Bertolacini's wife until his unfortunate death in 2018. So she, again, indicates she was an owner of the property and lived there with her family from 1994 until 2018. I don't need to read all of the words, but same thing. Anthony's business was in the business of landscaping, hardscaping, building stone and rock walls, walkways, stairways, land excavation, yard landscaping, planting, and snow plowing, snow removal. They also had a list, Anthony, I'll call him junior, I'm not sure he's a junior, but Anthony's son also has a letter in here that details even more specifically the vehicles. But Anthony's wife indicates, and some of the other things. So one thing that was going on with Anthony was they had one of the big sifters, the soil sifters, that actually cull out the stones and the rocks of different sizes. I have one near, behind my yard, not on my yard, but on an adjacent property, and when that goes, it's loud. They're big tumblers that have, think of a sifter for flour in your kitchen, but they're big, big, round tumblers that go around and have various sized holes in them so that we can sift out the nice soil from the small stones from the bigger stones and rocks. But they tumble like a rock tumbler, and they make quite a bit of noise. So that was happening because they were literally bringing in soil and then making their own separate piles of stone and soil and so forth. Anthony's also had trees, you know, logging trees coming in on trucks and was, you know, essentially bringing them in, chainsawing them, and making firewood with them. That won't be happening with the current proposal. And the other comments that Leah made really had to do with sort of the ongoing, you know, exercises of the family, you know, children that were able to grow up and run around the site, be involved in the activity. It was a seven-day-a-week operation. Like most of them, trucks and equipment leave the property in the morning, hauling machinery and materials, and returning in the evening. But she does say, on a regular basis, there were deliveries of wood for log splitting. Firewood was sold from the property. Large mulch deliveries would come in on 18-wheeled trucks. So again, all of those activities are actually not proposed with Fugier Landscaping. Again, I'm trying not to read the whole thing, but she mentions the outbuildings, the activities going on during the winter, employee parking, log splitters, soil sifters, and so forth, in addition to having kids that had dirt bikes, four-wheelers, and so forth. But that would be the residential portion of the use, like it or not. Similarly, Anthony, the son, has commented specifically about the uses, his experience on the site. He was actually born at the property and had lived there all his life until 2018. And attached to his letter is a long list, again, I won't read it, but if you just scan it, of the trucks and equipment that was kept on site. This equipment, both bigger in number, but quite a bit bigger in size, so larger front loaders, you know, flatbed trucks, pickup trucks, sure, Bobcats, New Hollands, I don't know if you all know these names, but front-end loaders, mowers, so I think he may have been doing lawn maintenance as well, dump trucks, backhoes, tractor loaders, and so forth, probably twice the number of vehicles that would be proposed by Fugier. Luke has also provided an affidavit that may have, I think we gave you, I think at the last meeting, but just, again, included here for a quick, for comparison of the vehicles he has and the equipment he has on site. So back to the test. We're just about there. I think all of these items come to hopefully helping you to understand the transition in the use. It is up to the board to determine whether, as Mr. Haverdy said, whether you're comfortable saying that the greenhouse activity has transitioned to the current activity was not a change, it was just a transition, or in fact, was actually a change in the noncon, or modification in the nonconforming use. I think they're clearly related, and it's been a transition. It's not a greenhouse going to a restaurant, but you may find, I expect you might find, that it was in fact a change, even if it was related to how things happen over time. And then we get to the local test of just determining whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I just wanted to recap quickly that, well, we've already stated, there are no retail functions proposed at all. In full transparency, I wouldn't call it commercial at all, but I know Luke's kids, they have little firewood, and I called it more of a lemonade stand at front. But I don't, I would treat that really almost more as the residential use. There are no logs coming in. It would only be logs cut from anything coming off of the trees, you know, the logs they're taking from landscaping sites. So because there's no retail functions, I do agree that the 1955 variance essentially has lapsed, if not before 2018. It would have lapsed two years after 2018 when Luke came in, because he's not been doing retail. And then, bear with me, I don't want to get too redundant. My materials do say that you have the authority to determine that there's been no significant change in the use as compared to the prior nonconforming use, and to make a finding that the change from the commercial greenhouse use to the present, present meaning the last 34 years, really, landscape contractor's use is permissible. You can also essentially make that finding, but determine that there has been, the use has changed somewhat, so that it rises to your need to consider the special permit as opposed to just a finding that the change hasn't been significant enough. I, one of the reasons this came late in the day was I decided it might be helpful with all this material to try to propose some potential findings. I obviously can't put words in the board's mouth. But I've laid out some potential findings here, just to help sort of summarize the sequence of events, the critical dates in time and so forth, that I can run through really quickly. These, again, are things that I would deem as fact or findings that the board could make. So just kind of starting historically, that the property was used for commercial greenhouses prior to 1955, and continued as a permitted use within the residential zone until at least 1956. The greenhouse use became nonconforming in 1977, if not earlier, and continued until 1984, at which point a new owner continued and transitioned the greenhouse use to a landscape contractor's use. The landscape contractor use was continued from 84 to 94 by Environmental Gardens, and then again by Bertolacini and his family under Anthony's Gardens from 1994 to 2018, and then Fugier Landscaping from 2018 to present. Number six is the level of activity on site represented by number of vehicles or equipment and daily onsite activities has not increased as compared to Environmental Gardens or Bertolacini's use, and that the Chelmsford building inspectors identified the property subject to a prior nonconforming use in their written statements in 1984, 1994, and 2018. And that the 94 and 2018 letters specifically said that the continued use was allowed by right. In the 38 years since the property has been used for landscaping company, there have been no significant complaints regarding the use. Commercial activity on the property is not visible from Dalton Road, but for the limited deliveries and daily employee trips to and from the site. Fencing and/or landscaping buffers limit view into the site from abutting neighbors to the side and rear of the property. And the present use by Fugier Landscaping is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the prior nonconforming uses of the site. I don't need to read my draft motion, but I was also trying to provide some conditions that might help you with considering a special permit under the Chelmsford bylaw that would also be a way to sort of put on record the level of use we're talking about, so that if we get to a point in time where there's concern about any expansion, then you've got something to go back to, and you can count trucks, so you can count employees, or whatever that is. So I've given a stab at providing some conditions that would limit the Fugier Landscaping use of the property now and going forward, hopefully give some of the abutters, you know, comfort that there is no intention to expand the use. I guess I might as well go through them. So what we've suggested is no more than eight employees, other than family members. The employees now are at a six-to-eight level, including some part-time people, so like the mechanic is part-time, but that's a number that we'd be comfortable conditioning. Then be no commercial activities on Sundays. Commercial activity would be limited Monday to Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's probably really more like three or four in the afternoon, but I thought typical business hours might be acceptable. And then Saturday, a little bit later start, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The owner shall maintain and replace as necessary the existing fencing and/or green buffer between neighboring properties. So over time, if the fences fall down or get, you know, in poor condition, or vegetation that's been planted dies and doesn't provide that buffer, I think a condition like this would be a way to enforce making that get reinstalled. And finally, the number and size of commercial vehicles and equipment kept on the property shall be limited to the vehicles and equipment presently on the site, specifically not more than five small excavator skid steers, three dump trucks, and six pickup trucks. We increase this number by one because Luke's wife's SUV is actually registered as a commercial vehicle. So compared to the affidavit, I've added one to account for that SUV. But I've also qualified that it's pickup trucks or SUVs, as well as trailers used to transport material off-site. I'll stop talking before I lose my voice.
Are there any questions of Ms. Brown? Well, it was very complete.
I'm ready to sleep. Well, I'm not going anywhere, so.
If there are no questions from the board, I'll open this up to public comment at this time. Certainly, sir.
Thank you. I will be, I'm Henry Dane. I've been in front of you before on this matter, on behalf of the abutter, Ms. Thatcher. I will be considerably more brief. I submitted to you a memorandum dated December 27th, which had attached to it a number of photographs taken by a drone over this property. I wonder if we could put those color pictures up on the screen.
When did you say the pictures were taken?
27. These were, when?
Yes.
I think it was December 3rd. December 3rd. The board had originally intended to take a view of the site, but that was called off because of notice problems and COVID and things like that. So if we could just kind of take a look at each one of these pictures and move on from one to the next. I think there are about half a dozen of them. And I'd like you to observe whether you see any greenhouse on this property. Now, if the prior existing nonconforming use was a greenhouse, you would think that an extension or an expansion of that would be a different or a larger greenhouse, or a greenhouse in a different position. But in fact, what you see there is no greenhouse at all. So if that was the prior existing nonconforming use, how is it that it could be changed, altered, expanded, accepted into something totally different, which is what you see here? And the fact that in connection with the greenhouse activities in the past, that people conducted a great many other activities that were described by Ms. Brown, those may not have been really consistent with operating a greenhouse that was a permitted use, that they in fact were, well, exaggerations or expansions of the permitted use, and in fact were violations of the bylaw. And so the logic of the situation here is this, that the issue is not a prior existing use. The question is a prior existing permitted use, a use that was permitted before the bylaw was changed to prohibit that particular use. The definition, the formal definition is, a use achieves a status of nonconformity for statutory purposes if it precedes the coming into being of the zoning regulation which prohibits it. And your bylaw says, "This chapter shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun, or to a building or special permit issued before the first publication of notice of the public hearing required by the statute at which this chapter or any relevant part thereof was adopted." Well, it's really hard to see that what you have there today is a change that is something that you could legitimately say is a change of a greenhouse use when there is no greenhouse there. And that the other uses of the property that took place over the years, actually, that were not greenhouse per se, were probably violations of the bylaw, and they did not achieve prior existing nonconforming status, because they were not in effect in 1938, when the bylaw permitted in that zoning district only residential uses. And so what we say here is, the logic of this situation is that really you could have somebody essentially violating the zoning bylaw, and then coming into you and say, "That's a pre-existing use, and I want you to give me a special permit to change, alter, or extend it." Because under that principle, people could do almost anything under the bylaw, and the greater the violation, the greater the rights they would have. So it's perfectly clear that this is a totally different use. Just by looking at it, you can see that it's a totally different use from what was permitted and what was permitted as a greenhouse use under the bylaw. And so that it's really hard to see also that something that looks like this is not detrimental to a residential neighborhood. And in fact, it is entirely surrounded by private residences. And the fact that it may be less of a mess than it was 10 years ago is not something that justifies legitimizing it. So even if you, conceivably, as Ms. Brown has argued, you might have the authority, a special permit is totally discretionary with the board. a special permit is totally discretionary with the board. And you certainly have no obligation to issue a special permit just because you can. The question is, is it desirable under these circumstances? Even if it is permitted, and I would argue that this use and what you see in front of you is so different from anything that was actually legally permitted, that it cannot be subject to a special permit to continue what is going on there. I just make a note of what Ms. Brown referred to in the Articles of Organization of one of the prior units, users, where it describes a whole range of activities. I would just say it's typical in corporate powers sections to make them as inclusive as possible. And typically, they say at the end, "And to do any other thing which is permitted to a corporation formed under Chapter 156 of the laws of the Commonwealth." And the fact that their Articles of Organization allow them to do something does not mean that they did it. So I leave you with this, is that I think it would be a, almost a travesty to endorse this as, what you have there now, as a legitimate continuation of something that was essentially a farming and a rural activity many years ago of the operation of a greenhouse. Thank you.
Thank you. You may.
I've spoken before. I'm G. Lawrence Thatcher, 77 Linwood Street. Attorney Henry Dane has prepared and presented to you on my behalf two legal memos in opposition to Mr. Fugier's application before this appeals board. One addresses the applicant's request for some type of amendment to the Bennett 1955 so-called variance. The second memo addresses the applicant's alternative request for a finding that this current use as a contractor's yard is a prior existing nonconforming use. Both of these requests are shown to be invalid. The December 3rd, 2022 photos, which are submitted with the December 28th memo which you've been looking at, as well as Mr. Fugier's own statements, as well as his affidavit before this board, are clear and compelling evidence that Mr. Fugier is operating a contractor's yard as defined in our bylaws. Our zoning bylaws strictly prohibit the operation of a contractor's yard in a residential zone property. Mr. Fugier's operations may be neat, but the Fugier operation is still a contractor's yard by definition. Mr. Fugier's attorney has submitted that, quote, "This issue has turned into an emotional and historical exercise," close quote, and, quote, "The outcome goes to the livelihood of a local family and their small business and the respect of the Fugiers as well as many town staff over the decades." First, there's absolutely nothing emotional about opposing operations that are in violation of Chelmsford zoning bylaws. No one is forcing Mr. Fugier out of business. We are simply requesting that the operation of a, quote, "contractor's yard" be moved to an appropriate commercial B or industrial A zoned and properly permitted location. Chelmsford residents have a reasonable expectation that zoning bylaws will be complied with in order to protect our property values and quiet enjoyment of our homes. One senior town official recently commented to me that for several decades now, Chelmsford has treated use zoning with, and I quote, "a wink and a nod," close quote.
Who are you quoting? I don't understand.
I'll get, please. And that, its enforcement priority has been public health and safety. This very attitude and lax enforcement has brought us here today, with a current building commissioner concluding that the business operations of Fugier Landscaping and previous owners has increased through the years extending the nonconforming use. I understand that there's lots of discussion about that. But I think we need to accept that any previous enforcement oversights for decades do not legitimize the current violation. As I stated earlier in another meeting, this application is not about how nice Mr. Fugier appears to be, but how sincere he is about making a living, or how emotional or heartfelt anyone feels about him, or any hardship where he perceives due to his own decisions or actions. It's about zoning. Do not be distracted by irrelevant arguments. The evidence is clear and compelling that Mr. Fugier is operating a prohibited contractor's yard. As Attorney Dane has laid out before you in his legal briefs, I believe this application should fail. Thank you for your time.
Are there anyone else in the audience that wish to comment at this time, favor or opposition to it?
Just briefly. There is actually a greenhouse right here. I put a new roof on it, and it does get used. I don't know if it matters, but I'm just pointing it out that there is actually an original greenhouse still intact. And this picture was taken prior. We made several changes. We moved our operations around. We eliminated up to about 30 pallets of what you see there. I'm actually pleased with these pictures, so thank you for taking them, because I don't have a drone. If you look, there's a, next to the trailer is the bottom left of the screen. There's a dumpster there used to clean up a lot of trash and debris that we located that was buried to prior uses of us living there. That is also the area of which Mrs. Landry behind us stated that we removed two beautiful trees that were covered in vines and dead. We planted four new trees there, which you won't see pictured, but from the visit seven days later, you will remember that. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Just your name and address.
Randy Davidson. I live at 82 Linwood Street, at the dead end behind Fugier Landscaping, across from 77, who is the Thatcher's, and next to 79, which is the Landry's. And we've been at that residence since 1997. Prior to that, we lived up the road at number 67. We moved to Chelmsford because it was, we thought it was going to be a nice place to raise our children, and it has been. The neighborhood has been great. It's quiet. We love it. Since, I have a letter here, and it says, "The reason why we are opposed for the change in zoning in this property is because it would significantly impact our ability to enjoy the peaceful aspect of our neighborhood. There has been an increase of noise coming there since the Fugiers have been there." We knew the Bertolatini's. I'm sure there was noise, but to my memory, it's not sticking in my head. The thing that I remember about the Bertolatini's mostly was their kids playing back there. That was more annoying than his business. But with the Fugiers, it's not unexpected that we have been disturbed both inside our house and outside our house by machinery operated by his employees, especially early on weekday mornings and occasionally on Saturday mornings. I work part-time. On Wednesday, I'm off. I'd like to sleep till 7:30. I can't do it, in the summertime when the windows are open. We don't want to put him out of business, but this is a residential neighborhood, and we don't think that he should be operating a contractor's yard. Whatever Anthony did, it wasn't obvious. And why we didn't complain? I didn't know I could complain. I thought the town of Chelmsford approved this. I didn't have a leg to stand on that I was going to have to put up with it, but I'd been sitting out in my front yard with company in the summertime. We can't hear each other talk. It's not all the time. It's sometimes, sometimes it's ongoing. He has employees. My husband asked me not to say this, but he was recovering from a cardiac arrest last spring, and he was walking our dog. It was before 7:00 in the morning, and a car was coming across the four-way intersection from Stedman down Dalton, and it was going pretty fast, and it never stopped at the intersection. So my husband just raised his hands to ask the guy to slow down, and he slammed on his brakes and got out of the car and verbally accosted my husband. And then he proceeded to pull in. He never said anything, because nowadays you just don't want confrontation. But we really think that granting this request would legitimize what appears to be a business that should never have been allowed to go on this long anyway, and just because it's there doesn't make it right. And if you grant this zoning variance, what's to say he moves out? Why doesn't Marty's Landscaping just move in and start operating his business out of there? All the people that have approved this, or, you know, that want to do this, they don't live behind him where all the work is going on. They live on Dalton. We live behind. We live where all the trucks are, where all the rocks are being spilt, where the lights come at night. And I feel bad. We think that the town may have given him bad information, and now he's left in a really bad situation, and it makes all us neighbors look really bad. But we just don't think that a zoning variance is the answer, because once you do that, you can't go back.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
Paul Fenders, 158 Dalton. I'm actually, this house.
158?
158 Dalton. And we've been here, there for, since 2007, and we never, we didn't even know there was a business there until 2018. You know, there's no comparison between Luke and the other guy. Not to, I mean, it's great, his business is a lot better, but, I mean, and not only can we see, like, there used to be trees. He cut down one of the trees. We can look into the yard. We see stacks of pallets. We see dump trucks. But we can feel it, the low frequencies of the bobcats. You can actually, you can, and just tonight, before this meeting, I was like, wow, I feel this rumbling. I was like, he can't be working this late, because of the meeting. And I look up, and sure enough, there's a bobcat doing something. I don't know the headlights were in. So the town said that a greenhouse is detrimental to the, to the, I don't understand why a greenhouse is bad, but a contracting yard's fine for the zoning.
I don't think it really came about that way. I think at one point it had greenhouses, and that use has morphed away from greenhouses, though there are, you know, there's a section that has a greenhouse still.
Okay. Because, I mean, I would be fine with a greenhouse, because it's very quiet, so. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I do have supporters here.
Could approach the podium if you could.
Sorry. Sorry. Still getting used to this political thing. I apologize. I do have some supporters here that would like to say a few things, if that's time.
They're welcome to come up and speak.
Okay.
My name is Catherine, 148 Dalton Road. We are right, we share the fence from Dalton Road all the way to the back. We've been there like, I think, five years. We came around the same time with him. And I don't know why we are opposing him, because he, where we live and where he is, we have, we don't hear anything. I mean, there is some movements going on. There are children at the back. There are trucks coming in and out. We are really not opposed to him doing what he's doing, because it doesn't bother us. He's a good neighbor. He helps us shovel the snow. And if you look at the map, where the old, what is there right now and what he's planning to make, I think it's going to make the place just beautiful. So that's my, my opinion, and I support him doing what he's doing for his business and for his, taking care of his children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Amy St. Hilarious. I live at 146 Dalton Road. So my husband Greg and I, we put together a letter as well in support of Mr. Fugier. My family actually bought our home in 1984. So I grew up in that home. I was, when I was born, lived in that house my entire life. So from our perspective, we're two houses over, Luke and his family are wonderful. They're great neighbors. From where we are, it's really no more, no more noise than that of a leaf blower. It's, there's an occasional delivery that we hear, and it's the idling of the truck. I work from home a couple days a week, and I hear these things, and really, that's all that we hear. So from a noise perspective and a disturbance, it's really, it's not a concern of ours. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Charles. I'm just a neighbor, 148 Dalton Road, just a close neighbor, just one fence. And what I can say is that I rarely hear anything much, you know, according to myself and my family. There's nothing of any disturbance noise that I can say I normally hear. And other than just movement of the cars here and there, nothing much, nothing much of any concern for me on my side. I really support him. He's a young man. I really like seeing young men grow up, and especially having that future for the children and a good plan for his family. So I really feel I support him for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments this evening?
There are none. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. One, I think, important fact for you to understand is that it is true that contractor's yards are not allowed in the residential zone. When you look to nonconforming uses and a change in a nonconforming use, it does need to be a use that's allowed by the bylaw. So if contractor's yards were prohibited all over town, that's not a nonconforming use you could switch to. However, the bylaw does provide for contractor's yards, and I think this is more than just a contractor's yard, but call it a contractor's yard. They are allowed in the Chelmsford zoning in other districts. So therefore, the board has the authority. Again, you have to go through the test, but you have the authority to grant this change, modification, expansion, however you want to look at it, to allow this type of use on this property in the residential zone. I think Luke already called attention to the fact that he does still maintain a greenhouse. I think that's really, that was the main point I wanted to make here.
Thank you. Any further questions of the board to the, to anyone, actually? There's no applicant, per se. Seeing none? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Steve, second. Nancy? All in favor?
Aye.
So it sounds like the ideal position would be to do the test and see what we come up with, the powers test. Is that correct?
Correct.
And see if we think there has been substantial change in use or extension.
As compared to 1977 or 1930?
I think that no, no matter.
So 1938 is not relevant.
Okay.
That's when zoning came into place in Chelmsford. The question is, what was the prevailing use at the time that zoning changed to make the use nonconforming?
Which happened in 77?
It happened sometime between 1955 and 1977. We know that there was a use there, that this use was established as of right in 1955, when the use variance was granted for the retail portion. The rest of the use, the nursery greenhouse use, was allowed as of right. The retail sales is what the variance was for, and that was what required the use variance.
Okay.
Sometime between that point in time and 1977. Sometime between that point in time and 1977, it became pre-existing non-conforming. And the use, from all of the, the testimony we've heard, remained substantially the same. From 1955 to 1977, it was still, you know, predominantly nursery slash greenhouse use. So that is the applicable use that you should be looking at as the baseline. And then look at whether the change, which apparently commenced sometime after 1984, whether that is the nature and use prevailing when the zoning change took effect.
Thank you.
Anyone want to reply on this? Story Charlie?
Yeah, let me tell you some stories.
Oh, sweet Jesus.
On the planning board, it was pretty cut and dry. When you're on a board of appeals, it's not so cut and dry. But I, but I reduced this to my way of talking, which is very minimal. And I come up with, um, one or two things that are, stand out. Is this, is this zoning, or is not the zoning, but the, um, non-conforming status of this property, is it less detrimental now or more detrimental to the neighbors? That's, that's a really good question. And I guess the only way to tell would be to have a, um, a noise, what's a noise meter called?
Decibel reader.
A decibel reader, out there, you know, for the last 25 years. And see how noisy it was and how it was worked and how trucks came in and how trucks did not come in. So, so I did my little comparison on what the last people did. And I like to use numbers. Numbers usually don't lie. So I went from today back to Environmental Gardens. And we went from 12 employees to 22 employees for Anthony's to 16 for Environmental Gardens. Oh, sorry, nope, that's not employees, I'm reading the wrong line. That's trucks. Those are the trucks. 12, 22, and 16. 12 today and as high as 22 trucks in the yard. The employees, I, I don't have numbers for everybody, but the most I saw was eight to 12. And today, in the landscape company, we're gonna have eight. So that's a lot less than eight to 12. So in a, in a less detrimental or more detrimental of the property, I would say today it's slightly less detrimental to the, to the neighbors than it was in the previous years. And that's only by numbers.
I've got a question for you, Charlie.
Sure.
Those numbers that you're throwing out, do they coincide with 1977? Because that's our-
I believe they do, because that's, that's what the last book is, yes.
No, but the, the numbers that Charlie is reading have to do with the prior landscaping uses.
Yes.
They, they don't address the nursery slash greenhouse use. And I don't think there's any way of really getting any numbers, you know, that you could use from 40 years ago, you know, to, to make that comparison.
Yeah, because his numbers are back in the 80s or whatever and we need to go back into, into the 70s and the 60s and the 50s. Yeah.
Okay. I did not do that.
Can I just get a point of clarification?
Sure.
Can she?
Environmental Gardens operated all of the greenhouses. Oh, sorry.
I think we've closed the public hearing.
No, you did, and you, you can allow clarifications, so, but I'll leave that to you.
Counsel?
Um, I, I think that if the board so chooses, it can vote to reopen the public hearing and take additional information.
And I voted no not to close, to not close the public hearing?
It was just a point of clarification.
You did?
I didn't hear that.
I didn't catch that either. I guess have a motion to reopen the public hearing for clarification?
By me.
Second?
Second.
Steve?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you just use the podium for our television audience.
Thanks. It's actually my opinion, you don't need to reopen a hearing just for clarification, but if that's all it is. But we just wanted to clarify that Environmental Gardens actually did operate all of the greenhouses into, during his operation into the 80s and probably early 90s at least. I'm not sure when they-
Eighty-four to 96 or something.
So he, he continued the, um, the greenhouse operation in, from 1984.
2018.
No, not- Not till 18, but from 1984 until sometime prior to 1994, I believe.
Is that in here somewhere?
And that's in his affidavit.
Is that in?
With the years?
Yes.
Yeah.
There you go.
Because Anthony bought it.
And he definitely had greenhouse, was when he bought it.
It's, uh, that's Exhibit C.
Exhibit C.
On the opposite page of the color brochure. He stated there were two skid steers, two mini excavators, flatbed trucks, two large dump trucks, six wheelers, four pickup trucks, and various trailers for transport. Resale of plants, fill, topsoil, and mulch. The delivery of mulch, fill, topsoil, et cetera, was in a 52-foot-long truck, especially in the beginning of spring and often as required.
But where does that say he still had greenhouses?
If you look at Exhibit D in Attorney Brown submitted, which is the statement from Leah McMillan.
Yeah.
It states that when the property was purchased, it was currently in use as a landscaping business. The property was used for growing plants and selling them prior to that. Then it gardens. There were five greenhouses and three outbuildings at the time of purchase. So there was still greenhouses-
In 1994. When they purchased.
Well, yes, when they purchased in 1994. So from 1984, when Environmental Gardens purchased until 1994, there were still greenhouses.
Is the public hearing open?
It's still open, yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Philip Leopolos, I'm an attorney in Chelmsford at 9 North Road. I think it's hard, you know, probably one of the most difficult things is trying to figure out what was happening 50 years ago, right, 60 years ago. And to some extent, um, what we have is, we've got prior building inspectors from, let's say, 30 years ago, that said, hey, you can continue to do this. And so that gives us a little bit of insight as what was happening more than 30 years ago. And I think the 1994 letter from Tony Zagzoo is very helpful because in my understanding, he was one of the longest-serving building inspectors for the town. Like, you guys would know someone.
Very long time.
I mean, decades, maybe a couple of decades, he was here forever. And so in 94, he looked at the site prior to that timeframe and, and found that it could continue to be used as a nursery, retail sale, so there was still retail sales going on there, which I think is a much more intensive use, to have customers coming, a retail, I mean, actual retail in a residential zone, uh, and operation of the landscaping business. So we know the nursery was in effect even as of 94, obviously well before that, still in effect, you know, albeit smaller, there's still the greenhouse there. But even, even in Tony's view of the history from 94 prior, it was kind of similar to what's being done there today. Nursery, retail sale of nursery products, operation of a landscaping business. So I think it's well within the board's right, or well within the board's discretion to find that, you know, that the use kind of hasn't been that different for the last 40, 50, 60 years. It may have modernized as times modernized. And I think the analogy of the mom and pa, you know, diner turning into a Burger King seems like a huge change, but it's still restaurant to restaurant. And so, you know, I, I think it would be hard and maybe not quite fair on my client to sit here today and have to say, to have to prove what happened 50, 60 years ago. We've got a 1994 building inspector, one of the longest-term building inspectors for the town, that's put on paper what was happening prior to what he found at the time was okay to continue to happen there. And then we've got the 2018 building inspector that says, I looked at, meaning the building inspector, looked at the file, looked at the rectors, and he found that that was still a pre-existing non-conforming use. So we've got building inspectors for the town of Chelmsford that looked at the history and made those determinations. And I think the board could easily rely on those, those historical documents to make that same determination. We don't have to sit here today and say, someone has to tell us what happened in 1960. There's, there's probably no one left to do that, but we have some building inspectors 30-plus years ago that, you know, kind of knew what was happening historically with that site and found that it was, it was, it was a pre-existing, ongoing use. Same in 94, same in 2018. So I think that the board could certainly rely on that evidence.
Any further thoughts?
You might ask it that one, hasn't it?
Erin, do you have any questions?
She's still there. She might be muted.
Seeing none, I think we go back to the powers rule and try to understand if-
Need to close the public hearing?
We can, I don't know.
I'm rapping on it.
Sorry, guys, I just saw you ask if I had any questions. I'm on a delay watching live.
Okay, do you have any questions, Erin?
No, I don't, thank you.
Um, will we accept a motion to close the public hearing?
Should we keep it open while we don't break in case we have a question?
We can leave it open, it doesn't change anything. All right, we're gonna leave the public hearing open for a period of time and continue our board's discussion.
Let's see.
So I think the question is, based on what we know about it, is what's going on there, a change in use or an extension of use? Or is it just the change of times of what is being done as far as landscaping in general? The, like many things, it's, it's changed what is landscaping. I mean, you never would have had somebody in 1980 come out and put in a brick wall for you, it just wasn't how things were done. So, uh, the times morphed, the, you know, they got more modern, there's more product, there's cement-based products that just didn't exist. So that would be the natural form to, to move with the future. I mean, is that the case with this? I don't know.
I would say you are correct, it has morphed into what it is today by all those years from 1955 till today. Morphed.
I don't know if that matters, though, I mean-
Well, it has to be a substantial extension, or is it just an extension? So.
But the fact that the times changed around it and it changed with them, I, if the times changed around it, like, you know, it could have been a 12-car dealership back in 1960 because, you know, it was a small town and now we're in a booming metropolis, so there's 1,200 cars, it's still a car dealership, but it's changed with the times. I mean, I don't think that part of it really matters for-
But we, we don't have a 1,200-car landscaping yard here.
Yeah.
I think the, uh, the amount of energy if you would use to do what they did and what they're doing now has not changed drastically. Or if it has, it has reduced. Based on what I know about it, the, the wood cutting there was fairly substantial back in the day. That was pretty much a woodlot for many years.
Yeah, I think that part I, I, I agree with more rather than the fact that, you know, we wouldn't have gotten someone to do brick walls in 1970 and we would today. I don't think that weighs in for me as much as the scale of operations.
You feel the scale is more than it was at the start?
So one, one question I don't think we have an answer to, and I don't think it's been brought up yet, is at what point was contractors' shop yard added to the use schedule? So-
Tony's letter was up there and mentioned it.
1984, um, you know, there was an opinion from the building commissioner at that time that the introduction of landscaping business on the property would have required a special permit. So it seems as though it was likely not allowed, but I mean, I think you can take a look at what was done at that time, which was to introduce some elements of a landscaping business while maintaining the original nursery greenhouse operation. And then over time, that morphed. So the question is, is the introduction of the, the landscaping aspect of this, was that something that would have, was specifically addressed in the zoning bylaws in 1984? Or whether is, is that something that in 1984 could have been a natural extension of the greenhouse nursery use? And I don't know that we have an answer to that right now. I think we would need to do the research and find out when this section, the contractor's shop slash yard, section, um, E5 in the table of, of uses, was added. But I, I have a suspicion that it's more recent than 1984. But I could be wrong.
Well, it was also looked at again in 2000, the letter here from Sean.
2018, I think.
In 2018, as a commercial property.
Oh, I guess they're still open, but that's a 77 bylaw.
And, I mean, how, how, when we look at these exhibits that were presented by Ms. Brown, I mean, they do carry quite a bit of weight of a continual use, right?
I, I agree.
I mean, the building inspectors are both claiming that it's a continued use of a commercial business and a commercial property. One, clearly, operation of a landscaping business, and then the other, the office concluded that the use of a landscaping business in Guntz Center has been a continuous use.
And that was 34 years between them and he was, Tony was referencing what has happened in the past. I think Glenn had a comment?
Yeah, it's the same thing, that although they, the inspectors may not have enunciated how things have morphed in writing, their decisions seem to reflect they understood it and that it was okay to continue-
Continue in that manner. Leave it open, sir.
From your own GIS website, it looks like that is the 2004 photographs, aerial photographs in the GIS showing Anthony's gardens. And definitely the current use is an incredible increase, an exponential increase in intensity.
What date was that?
2004.
2004.
At your own database.
All of the aerial photos from 2004 or even earlier were submitted as part of our initial package.
Yeah, I thought that, I've seen that before, I believe I have.
We have. Affidavits.
That document shed any light on things, Paul?
Um, it, well, it does note contractor's yard is not in allowed use in this zoning district in 1977. I think this is, this is 77?
For definition of a contractor's yard, anywhere?
Uh, yes.
Exhibit C says, "Environmental gardens creating beautiful outdoor living spaces since nineteen seventy-eight." Do we know if they were there in nineteen seventy-eight, or did...
Environmental gardens? I think in the affidavit, it states when he started.
Eighty-six, they filed the Articles of Organization.
It says nineteen eighty-four on this.
Contractor's yard slash, contractor's shop slash yard indoor. A building or part thereof used as a landscaping construction or building professional for the enclosed storage of heavy equipment, materials, supplies, and fabrication of sub-assemblies. Accessory office, retail merchandising, and sales are permitted. Outdoor displays and storage and sales are prohibited.
And that was amended on April thirtieth, two thousand and twelve town meeting. So that's not the definition that was in effect.
I'm gonna read the outdoor definition as well. Contractor's yard outdoor, which really is gonna give us the same problem, it is also four-thirty, two thousand and twelve. Any portion of the premises used by a building, landscaping, or construction professional for the outdoor storage of heavy equipment, materials, supplies, and fabrication of sub-assemblies. An accessory office is permitted. But again, both of those postdate our needs.
Right. So the question is, at the time the landscaping features were added to the pre-existing, non-conforming use, were they considered pursuant to our bylaws to have been a similar use? Or were they considered to be a separate use? And I don't know that we have an answer to that tonight.
I don't know how we're gonna get one.
Well, we would have to get the full copy of the nineteen seventy-seven zoning bylaw and look at the definitions contained therein and see if it had a definition of contractor's yard.
Is that accessible? That we know of?
Well, we certainly have copies of it here in town. I don't have it with me. I don't think it's available online.
Okay. But if we get that, what are we gonna tie that to? Because we don't have, all of these images and affidavits go back to nineteen eighty-four, not to nineteen seventy, nineteen fifty-five to seventy-seven. So if we get the definition in nineteen seventy-seven, we don't have...
Well, we know that the warehouse, no warehouse, I'm sorry, the greenhouse slash nursery use was commenced prior to the zoning in nineteen seventy-seven, right?
Yep.
If that was established as a pre-existing, non-conforming use and the introduction of the landscaping aspects would not have fallen within the definition of contractor's yard at that time, then you can consider that potentially to be sort of a natural expansion of the prior use. Whereas if that's not something that was allowed at that time, if that is within the definition of contractor's yard at that time, then I think you need to look at that as being a change in the use, at which point you would then move on to the next step of the process. So we're still really at the point here where we're trying to determine whether or not there was a change in the use.
Would that be something that you could obtain, Jose?
Of course.
Or Paul? Yeah, actually, yeah. I don't wanna make, I don't know who to ask to do it. I don't know where to find it.
It'd be easier for Jose to get it.
I guess without that information...
I don't know that it's gonna give us an answer. I don't know that there's gonna be a specific definition of contractor's yard that was in place at that time, but...
That's what we should find out before making a determination.
Right.
With that being said, I guess I would look to a continuance until February...
February second.
February second. And charge Jose with seeing if we can get a copy of the nineteen seventy-seven. That being said, the public meeting is still open. We can take testimony again on the second. And unless there's something that someone would like to say tonight, we'll vote for a continuance.
Okay. I will make a motion to continue.
Before we do that, can we have Attorney Brown formally withdraw the request for the modification of the variance? Because that time clock would otherwise be ticking.
Correct.
So withdrawn, but I could put that in writing.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent. They're no longer looking for a variance.
I will make a motion to continue one fifty to one fifty-two Dalton Road for a special permit to February second, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Second.
Peter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. I'll try to figure it out.
Is that the only thing today?
There are minutes and discussion later.
Are we doing Freeman Road?
Continue the next two, vote to continue.
Could I get a motion to continue?
What about the minutes?
Members of the board, thank you so much for your time.
This is two other...
I appreciate it. I know you do this out of goodness. Thank you.
Oh, the other hearing, sorry. I wasn't listening.
So there are two other hearing scheduled tonight. Sixteen Freeman Road, would you like to get a continuance till February second? Motion? You know what? I will read this into the record next week. I apologize.
I apologize. I got distracted trying to take your question, but I actually have it here with me today. So my apologies for that. We will make sure we read that.
Okay. Okay, we give it?
Sure.
Thank you. It was in the packet. We just...
So we're continuing Freeman Road and Rainbow?
Okay. Sure. Okay.
Yeah, we could do, we could do, we don't have to do them separately. We could do them both. Eleven Rainbow is being continued as well. So if I could get a motion to continue both sixteen Freeman and eleven Rainbow Avenue.
I will make a motion to continue sixteen Freeman Road and eleven Rainbow Avenue to February second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes.
Yeah, we have a discussion item to discuss the zoning bylaw amendments for April town meeting. And on January twenty-fifth, the planning board is going to discuss this as well. Do you have any input on these?
No, we'll get them at all.
Okay. Then, yes, sir. Enjoy your evening.
All right. Have a good night.
So just to update the board, in talking to Evan this afternoon, we had submitted a legal notice for the newspaper to publicize a public hearing with the planning board regarding zoning amendments for April annual town meeting, as Evan had suggested when he was here last month. So that will be published. So Evan's asking if the board could discuss what they would like to see, prefer, for the zoning amendments regarding the percentage lot coverage as well as the floor area ratio, as we've discussed in the past. And that was, that's been an issue for the last few hearings we've had, for non-conforming, pre-existing lots. So, and he had mentioned in the past whether you wanted to change the percentage for the smaller lots or if you want to set a threshold for a particular smaller size to even remove that requirement.
Something like under twenty thousand.
When we would, yeah, when we were dealing with Sylvan Ave, I think it was a ten-thousand-square-foot lot.
Mm-hmm.
And they were already at, I forget what the number was, percentage coverage. Because it does, the percentage coverage is not just the house, but it also includes any sheds or detached garages as well. So it's up to the board to discuss that and come up with some suggestions to present to the planning board for the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
And the way it reads right now is...
Fifteen?
Twenty, wasn't it?
I looked up a few towns, and some towns go as much as ratios, two to one. Some cities are two to one. You have a thousand-square-foot lot, you can build a two-thousand-square-foot house.
We're not a city either, but I'm not comfortable removing all restrictions on smaller lots, but definitely can expand it.
I don't know. I didn't say to go to two to one.
They're saying that's an optimal or some more packed area. I mean, I think it'd be crazy to allow, well, I guess if you had three floors, that would be taken up, and it was a thousand-square-foot lot, which is kind of crazy to consider. But it would only be a three-hundred-square-foot building or three-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot building. You had three floors. It really wouldn't take up the whole lot.
Right. Right.
I think the idea of tiering it, and maybe the planning board has some thoughts on it, that we don't have to actually define it, but say that a smaller lot, less than half an acre, twenty thousand square feet, could get some relief rather than just a single percentage.
Yeah.
I think a hundred percent is crazy.
In Chelmsford today, maybe not.
I mean, when you say you have a, you don't have a thousand square foot, a ten-thousand-square-foot lot. Right now, you can get...
Does lots out on Baptist Pond, four thousand square feet?
Yeah, right.
Looks like RB FAR is twenty percent. Lot coverage is fifteen percent.
And it's too bad the RBs aren't a size building or a size lot, because that would be very helpful. National Building Coverage, CA.
So are we looking to include lot, increase lot coverage, floor area ratio, or both?
Both?
Yeah, let's say both.
I think one without the other is gonna be problematic. RA allows you ten percent of coverage, which is a forty-thousand-square-foot lot. So you could have a four-thousand-square-feet of coverage.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem very, you know, I think...
We'll leave that at ten?
I don't. I don't. I'd like to see it increased.
Increase?
If it's a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, you're limited to a thousand-square-feet of coverage, which could be a two-thousand-square-foot house if it was a two-story, or a three-thousand-square-foot house if it was a three-story.
So I guess one of the questions you may want to consider is, do you want to change that number across the board or leave it as it is for the standard-size lot? And just consider what you might want to increase it by for those pre-existing, non-conforming lots?
I guess one of the questions you may want to consider is...
Oh, that's strange. I'm hearing myself. Erin just unmuted herself.
Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry.
Hi, Erin.
There you go.
No, I just heard myself repeat myself. It was awkward.
It's confusing, watching it on the screen, and then I'm actually a little bit delayed behind you guys also live, so it's...
You actually interrupted yourself.
I interrupted myself. It wasn't you, Erin.
I have a question. So do we have, can somebody remind me, what do we have as far as, like, height requirements? Do we have height requirements?
Thirty-five feet.
We do have height requirements, thirty-five feet. Okay. That was kind of my question, because I was just thinking from a square footage perspective, in order to prevent kind of the building up to get by some of that. Okay.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the solution in some of these cases, so that's, you know, a consideration.
And the FAR includes if the basement is...
Finished or washed up.
Finished. So you include that as well?
In the FAR.
In the FAR.
Floor area.
If it's finished. Yeah, if it's finished. But that's kind of, I feel like that can be kind of a gray area, too, right?
But these, I mean, a lot of these houses exist, so now you want to decide, you know, how much is too much? But when you add in a, you know, a six-hundred-square-foot garage, it doesn't take a lot to build these out.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, with a lot of people adding on instead of buying new these days, I was just thinking about all the building up that could go on. But we'd still have the height requirements to kind of offset.
I think it's also two and a half stories.
Crazy built, right? Like...
Two and a half stories?
I've seen three-story houses, thirty-five.
I think the area of the second, of the third floor has to be half the area of the second or first floor.
I'm not sure.
I mean, and I don't think this is like, I don't think this is probably an issue in Chelmsford because our lots just tend to be bigger, but, you know, I remember this house in Wall Fam that they built on this tiny little strip of land. They built this ridiculous-looking house. It's very thin and very long. You know, everyone in town knew this house because it was so kind of ridiculous-looking, but they did it. You know, in accordance with the zoning things. And, you know, it was kind of, it was kind of a big joke. I feel like everybody who's lived in Wall Fam long enough knows the house, you know?
It's really interesting that you say that, because I don't know if anyone else remembers this.
North Road.
North Road and Earland Road. They built this, this house that just barely fit on the property. But if you go buy it now, you'd never know what house I was talking about.
You wouldn't.
The trees or the fencing, it was when they first did it, it was like, oh, my God, this little three-foot-wide house, which is not the case, but it was, it was very narrow. But if you went by it today, you wouldn't look at it and go, oh, my God, what happened to that? It just isn't like that. So, and looking it up, Erin, the stories in R A, B, C, and R M and C A are all three. Then you get into commercials, which some are four. But three stories seems to be what's allowed in town.
Yeah.
I really thought it was two and a half, so I think we're at three, though.
But still thirty-five feet. So it's better thirty-five feet.
Yes, all the heights are thirty-five, again, until you get to commercial, which is forty-five in a few instances. Industrial is forty-five.
Yeah, just something to, I don't know.
Right. Well, the height is gonna be a factor of how big you can make that third floor, because the roof itself is typically gonna have pitch. But I guess that's not an absolute. You're gonna have a flat roof. It's just...
Yeah, I mean, I just think as things become crowded, people get creative. You know what I mean?
Yeah, they try to find a way.
Creative sometimes in a, in a way that, that might not be beneficial to the town.
So RC is twenty thousand square feet of area required, which, there's a lot smaller. RM is forty thousand, RB is forty thousand, and RA is sixty thousand. If we went, I mean, should we identify RC as something that we could increase? Or maybe consider RA, B, and M going up a percentage that would be different than the RC? Maybe increasing the RC to a higher number?
Keep in mind, too, that the variances that have come before the board these last few months, where they were specifically coming for the variance request was...
The FAR relief for the area, really.
Yeah, it was RB. So they were in the RB district, but they were RC-sized lots.
I see. I see.
So that's where the problem was coming up recently.
Okay. Rainbow Ave's that way, isn't it?
Rainbow Ave is that way, so, and that's still open.
Right.
Sylvan Ave was that way as well. Yeah, so...
Is anybody comfortable with a...
And so those neighborhoods have a lot of houses that fall within that, this...
Right.
What do you mean, the coverage on a, I mean, an RA lot, it's never gonna end up in...
I don't think you'll have the issue with the RA.
Right. Do you want to do something like fifty percent with RB and RC?
Wow.
Is that more than you'd like?
I mean, are you limiting it, like, smaller-sized lots? Like, that on smaller lots and not across the board?
On the forty-thousand-square-foot lots.
Because then I'd be more inclined to, because then I feel like other people are just gonna take advantage of that.
Right. You could, for instance, something under twenty thousand... You, you could, for instance, something under twenty thousand square, um, twenty thousand square feet.
Smaller lots can have a higher percentage type of...
Because like Sylvan was a seven thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, it was small.
What, what was it, at the end of the day, do you remember? Does it show what they were asking for? Do we have the...
Forty percent.
And they were at, uh, that was an R B, so they were at fifteen?
Yes.
And actually, I think that was corrected afterwards when the engineer first did it. He miscalculated that forty percent. I think at the end it was like thirty-one.
Thirty-two or something, thirty-one and change.
Thirty-one is the FAR, is that...
Oh, am I considering the wrong thing then? I don't remember. I don't have that file on me to pull up for an example, but I do recall he adjusted that forty percent. Because if you look, if you look at the layout of that lot, that's not close to half covered up. He had actually counted in the driveway, because it was blacktop. He thought the blacktop counted, and then he, he, um, removed the calculation of the driveway, because the driveway doesn't count. And that's where that forty percent was off when he initially did that calculation.
Yeah, but I mean, I think going to fifty percent would be crazy, like...
That's a little high, forty?
I mean, if you, if you just imagine they were just going to say, I'm going to do half my, my, my lot as house, like, that would be...
Hey, I'll tell you why I won't do it, Steve, the taxes will kill you.
That's true, too, Charlie. Yeah, I can vouch for that.
So, to accomplish what we're specifically looking for in Sylvan, we need to do forty percent.
Apparently thirty percent.
But, I mean, they can always come to us, too. This isn't eliminating any relief that we could potentially give. This is just to avoid coming to us, right? So we don't have to...
On the FAR or the, uh, coverage. There's no special permit relief.
So it's just a variance.
No, it's, yeah, a special permit's only dis, uh, dimensionally.
Mm-hmm. Perhaps that's another thing to say, you know, to consider, whether or not you want to include, if, if the lot is non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming, and, you know, do, do you just want to include that under the special permit? If, if the, if it's allowed for the dimensional requirements?
So, if it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, we could increase the floor area in amount and the coverage in amount. Only if it's pre-existing non-conforming.
That's up for all of you to consider.
And they would still need to get dimensional relief where they too exceed the, I mean, everything, nothing else would change.
Does that help the people who have the twenty thousand square foot lots, who are looking to, like, Rainbow's the perfect example of that?
I think Rainbow would, would be able to be approved if we did that.
Can you put Rainbow up on the...
Uh, yeah, I'll just...
Yeah, I think that's what...
I'll just take a couple minutes, let me look up the older term though. Yep, I got it, I got it. Let me just zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, the minimum lot area was forty thousand with that.
Thought Mike was...
Sorry, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, it wasn't, it, it was, I think it was eleven, I think Charlie thought it was eleven.
But it's not considered a non-conformity, right? Nothing here is non-conforming, is it?
This is a non-conforming lot, right here.
Pretty much, all the small lots are non-conforming, aren't they?
Because of the year it was built, yeah, it has reduced setbacks because of the year it was built.
Can, can you pull the legend up? Is it okay to sneak down a little over, and just look at what the...
Definitely, let me see what they have here. So the lot size is ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty square feet. Um...
Just, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so let me see here. The one thing they didn't put on here, oops, sorry about that. They did put on the, um, total building coverage of what was proposed, but not the total FAR of what was proposed, because I was wondering how that would compare.
Floor area ratio.
So...
So the minimum building coverage is fifteen percent.
Mm-hmm, which is what's on the...
Is correct, yeah.
The maximum coverage.
Maximum coverage.
Maximum, yeah.
The fifteen and twenty is across the board.
And they would be asking for twenty percent.
Yeah.
Nineteen point one. Floor area, oh no, coverage.
Mm-hmm, coverage. They actually did not calculate the floor area. That's actually missing.
Oh, I see, this is the, that's the, you're right, you're right.
These are the min, the, uh, maximum.
I think it would be twice the coverage, because I, I don't think there's any place that wasn't second floor in that house. If, it, when they, when they do the addition.
Uh, it didn't extend all the way, and I can pull that up. The addition was going to, because this is a ranch. And, let me just get back here a second, let's see. This is the case where the second floor addition wasn't just over the, the footprint, it extended over a part of the house.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Let me cruise down and see some, some dimensional.
Mm-hmm.
Let me just do the math on it. Maybe it's not there. So the addition proper was nineteen by thirty-six.
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
I believe so. Fourteen by thirty-six.
That's not nineteen?
Mm-mm, so I even have it in the minutes, and I double-checked. Yeah, fourteen by thirty-six. So the...
So that's five twenty-four on a single floor. And it's two floors, because the garage still counts, so it'd be a thousand and twenty, thousand and forty-eight is the addition. And then the existing house...
And this is the second floor with...
Oh, that gets on around the second floor.
So this is the second floor, so this is the garage, this is the living space over the garage, and then this is the bedroom, kitchen, and bath. So that was an additional, um, gross seven hundred and forty-two square feet, net six hundred and eighty-eight. Oh, actually, that's total, I take that back. I take that back, that's gross, the whole thing.
Oh, that's the apartment?
Yeah, the LA.
And fifty-one feet, right?
Scratch what I just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what size is that bedroom area that was...
Uh, looks like twenty-one by fourteen.
So what are you trying to figure out?
The, the floor area of the, of the whole...
I know, but...
Just to give us an idea of how much it increases by, you can use paper if you need more space.
Two hundred and ninety-four feet?
Two hundred and ninety-four and a thousand and forty-eight.
Oops, sorry.
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen forty is the area of the addition and the, the full addition, and then what size is the home?
The existing home?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see, actually.
The existing home, they're actually not, they're going to go...
Did you have that on the last thing you were... I thought they calculated the original, but not the new on the original drawing you're looking at.
Mm-mm, they just have the maximum floor ratio. Let me go back just to make sure, because that was the car, um...
It was the coverage, not the floor area, that's what we're missing.
Mm-hmm. Let me see here.
So we would be looking at this whole house there, which is...
So thirty-eight, well, the existing is thirty-eight plus thirteen eight. Right, because this is the former garage turned into living room. So this is the original house right here.
Right.
Right? And this is twenty-six, so...
Thirty-eight by twenty-six.
Yeah. Well, no, it's more than thirty-eight, so this is, what, forty, fifty-one, fifty-two? Because it's thirty-eight to this point, and then thirteen eight.
So fifty-two by what?
Right. It's about fifty-two by twenty-six.
Thirteen fifty-two?
Right, and then that.
Yep, so that's not big.
Thirteen fifty-two?
Mm-hmm. But it looks like there's already a little bump out in the back as well. Um, actually, you know what? Let me do this, eleven rainbow, let's see what's on just square footage on the property card.
Yeah, that'd be easier.
That might be easier.
Right, at least it's close.
It's not always accurate, but, um, oh. It's still here. Everyone wave.
Do a dance.
No, but you were talking, that would be enough.
Well, it wasn't a carrying, but it's, I think it's those ones over there that went out.
Let's see here, it's too late.
It's just over there.
It's a nice ambiance to it.
So, so you don't, so you think forty then?
So let's see, um, it's listed as... Where am I here?
Twelve fourteen.
Yep.
So with the floor area adding a thousand and forty-eight, you're, you're over forty percent.
It's over forty?
Yeah, because you have twelve fourteen, and they're adding a thousand and forty-eight.
The floor area, not the lot coverage.
Right, right. And that can double up every time you go up a story, so...
It, it's really easy to exceed the floor area, I think.
Yeah.
Especially if your basement is finished.
Right.
For a ranch house, you, you quickly, in these smaller lots, you quickly reach that floor area ratio.
So maybe the floor area should be different than coverage.
Yeah, lot coverage, yeah.
Which it already is, but it seems like it's, may not be enough.
Right, right.
So what is it?
It's usually only, what, a five percent difference?
Going to the R B, which has been our concern, is twenty percent, and then the coverage is fifteen percent. So we would want to, in this case, go to fifty percent for the floor area ratio. And then we could do, I mean, what they needed was thirty-two. And, and I'm only thinking this is a good example, because when I look at this, I don't have any problem with that. I don't think what they're doing is wrong. I know their lot is small, but I don't think they're asking for anything that's unacceptable, and there's no special permit. You can't, you can't get that extra twenty percent out of it that you could with a dimensional requirement.
Right.
But we also don't want people to take advantage of it like this. We're like, okay, this looks normal, yes, we'll approve it.
Mm-hmm.
And it still comes before us, whereas if we just blanket it, and people are like, oh, I can do this now, and I'm going to go do something crazy, like...
Well, that's a good point, too. Would you rather have the FAR in percentage lot coverage, if it exceeds, to be done by special permit? That way you have that...
If exceeds like twenty-five, they come before us or something.
Yeah.
That way you have that discretion to see what the actual layout is, to give you an idea.
Yeah, I was thinking of that, too.
But a special permit, where we don't have the hardship.
Yeah, by special permit.
Because there is a hardship, I mean...
I like that better.
Yeah.
Way better.
That's really the way to go. So, tracking about the coverage, I think we could do forty percent, and they come to us. And then, well, instead of ten, I mean, it's forty, twenty-five for the coverage?
For lot coverage?
Overall R B or for smaller lots? What, what were you referring to?
It's fifteen right now, when you're talking about...
Now, if you're dividing lots too, it changes a lot, too. I mean, I think we could do R B and do twenty-five percent for the coverage, and fifty percent for the floor area, and after that, they would have to approach us.
Yeah, but it would allow people to take advantage of it, like Nancy says.
I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to find a way to, to get something that's, uh, qualifiable. It's, we, we don't want people saying we can build anything we want, for sure.
But if, if this particular case that we're looking at, if they could come to us and get granted by a special permit...
Be done.
Then we'd, I mean...
So we can just say we're okay with the ratios that are allowed, but we want to be able to grant it as a special permit instead of a variance?
On a case-by-case basis.
That would be really good.
That's legal, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's legal to do, and we can do that, that would be, uh, fine by me, though.
You may see a big increase in coming your way, if that's the case.
Right, people, they can do it.
As more and more people are, are adding on with this economy, because they can't afford to move up.
That's not going to change, the, the house is built, the lot is there. That spot is going to be utilized forever, and the way that's going to happen is additions, improvements, and, you know, that, that's going to happen. So if we just say, and this is, I don't even know if it's legal, but if we can do it as a special permit instead of a variance, I, I would have no problem with that.
Okay.
We don't get that many of these, really, that we, you know, we're not going to overwhelm.
So we change it, and they're like, why did we do that?
Well, I think, well, I think historically, it may have not been monitored as much as the...
The, the floor area and the coverage becoming a factor.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's tell that to the planning board, that we would like to see it be a special permit.
Okay, across the board? With all the, the districts?
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh...
That sounds fair.
You know, we still don't have to grant it, we can go, oh my god, are you kidding me? We don't have to grant a special permit either.
No, definitely not.
We, it takes away the hardship, but we still have our discretion.
Yeah.
Um, we can see what the planning board says, and, and, you know, we still have a few meetings before April, so...
Yeah, yeah, you can always fine-tune it then, yeah.
They may look at it totally differently, but I think that's a, you know, gives you the control, but doesn't give you, you know, we, we have to say no to you, there's nothing... I would not say no to Sylvan Ave if it was in front of us and there was no problem with doing it. I would approve that based on what I saw. Uh, there was, you know, no neighborhood opposition, which we're not even supposed to consider, which frustrates me no end, you know? That's not supposed to matter. Bill Gillette, you want to get it passed, get the neighbors on board, otherwise forget it. Nothing to do with any of it.
What are you doing?
Okay. Are any of you able to attend that meeting with the planning board to represent? Or do you want to choose someone to represent?
Nominate Becky?
No, I'm not a member, you can't, I'm not, I'm not a member.
Thank you, Brian.
We can all go in, yeah, have that discussion.
That's on Wednesday, right?
It's on a Wednesday, yes, Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. I cannot, then.
Things going on Wednesday? I had a ton of things on Wednesday.
I do, too, actually.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we just think about what else we want to do on adjourn now, or what, Brian?
Uh, we need minutes, too, Charlie.
You don't mind just giving me some...
I've had some minutes twice.
Did you?
Yeah.
Sounds like a different version, or... It took me a long time as well.
I guess.
For every hour of meeting, it's usually two or three of minutes.
Why are they called minutes and not hours?
They should be, I agree, I agree. See, I, my eyes are already doubling over, I can't even find my document. Here we go. That was a long one.